Good morning. It's 9:30. We will call our meeting to order. Pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In our prayer this morning, Heavenly Father, we beseech your divine guidance in this meeting. Keep us ever mindful of our obligation. Grant us, dear Lord, wisdom, tolerance, and courage that we may well serve our county and fulfill our trust. Amen. Could I have a motion to approve our minutes?
Move to approve the minutes of February 16th.
Thank you, Steve.
Second.
Thank you, Colleen. Any questions, discussion? Roll call, please.
Hambley?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes. And we will move on with our resolutions. First up is Andy Conrad. And standing in for Andy is Dan Becker from the County Engineers Office.
Good morning.
Good morning, Dan.
Good morning.
Missed you guys last week.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was nice to be here. We have one resolution today. The resolution is authorizing the Medina County engineer to purchase one 2020 modeled sports utility vehicle. And then we have the weekly permit list.
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion in the second. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Hambley?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Sure, Dan, but thanks for coming.
Thanks, Dan.
Next up, we have Amy Lyon Galvin, our county assistant county administrator.
Good morning.
Good morning, Amy.
I have 11 resolutions for your consideration this morning. The first resolution is amending the appropriation measure resolution. The second is amending the 2021 appropriations resolution by transferring appropriations. The third resolution is an expenditure adjustment for various funds. The fourth resolution is cash transfers to the Medina County Soil and Water Conservation District. The fifth resolution is the creation of a sheriff's office deputy testing fund and authorizing appropriations. The sixth resolution is the creation of a sheriff's office juvenile diversion program fund and authorizing appropriations. The seventh resolution is creation of the Office for Older Adults Medicare Improvements for Patients and Providers Act and authorizing appropriations. The eighth resolution is accepting applications for the use of procurement cards for two additional agencies. This would now include the Medina County Emergency Management Agency and the Medina County Sheriff. The ninth resolution is authorizing a contract with the Medina County Health Department for the provision of occupational immunization services. This will be in effect from today's adoption, hopefully through the end of December 2024. And this will take the place of what had previously been a contract at the Sanitary Engineers Department, just to open it up for their use, but anybody else that the commissioners may so choose to send for immunization. The 10th resolution is allowing expenses of county officials. These are for three training sessions for the sheriff's office. The first is a Glock armorers course in Beechwood that two will attend, an applied leadership principles in Willoughby, Ohio for three to attend, and a less lethal instructor certification course for one staff member to attend. And then the 11th resolution are approving the claims for the week in the amount of $996,136.38.
Move to approve the 11 resolutions.
Second.
Got a motion in a second. Any questions, discussion?
It's interesting to see that we're starting to have in-person training at some places for after a year of not really having to approve any travel expenses. We're starting to see those.
Yes, yes. I'd like to make one comment on the resolution regarding the health department immunizations.
Mm-hmm.
I get that out. So this is occupational immunization. So for our cleaning folks that come in, they need all of the various shots for hepatitis and so on and so forth. It's those kind of shots. It's not a specific program for the COVID vaccine. And I just want to clarify that.
Correct. No, I appreciate you mentioning that, Commissioner Hudson. It's typically for new hires. And in sanitary, it had been for employees of the wastewater treatment plants and so forth. But they just broaden the scope in the event that the commissioners would want to send any other new hires typically for their immunizations.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Nope.
Roll call, please.
Hambley?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Thank you, Amy.
Thank you, Amy.
Thank you.
And next we have Holly Murin, our Human Resources Director. Good morning, Hallie.
On our personal changes resolutions today, we have a new hire in sanitary, a promotion at county home, a rate increase in transit, a transfer between agencies from maintenance to sanitary, two return from leaves, one in transit, one in sanitary, three resignations, one in transit, one in maintenance, and one at office for older adults.
Move to approve the resolution.
Second.
Got a motion in a second. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Hambley?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Hallie.
Thank you, Hallie. Next we have Scott Miller, our county administrator. Good morning, Scott.
Good morning. I just have one resolution for you today. This is a resolution that will allow us to issue the bonds for the courthouse. It gives us the ability to issue bonds up to $32 million and for a period of up to 35 years. So interest rates are estimated at this point to be somewhere between 2.6% and 2.8%, depending on the length of the term, which brings us to about a $1.7 or $1.8 million bond payment per year.
Okay.
And we are currently working on the official statement. We'll probably issue the bonds sometime the third or fourth week of March.
Excellent.
Very exciting.
Yes, yes, it is.
You may only have one, but this is the biggest one.
Yes.
I will move to approve.
Second.
Any other discussion? Scott, we have some other bonds that are rolling off, though, correct?
We don't have any bonds that are rolling off. I think that we've got one that's up in like five years. But I do have the ability to retire some of the debt early. So we're going to retire one of the issuances this year in December, and then probably next year we'll retire two. So that'll free up an additional $400,000 that we can actually put towards this bond.
That's fine. Do we have any other long-term debt that we'd have the opportunity to refinance at a lower rate?
Only the ones that I'm paying off. So the option was to refinance the fourth. Really, there's two issuances with one of the issues, I mean, two parts, which would save us like $200,000 over, what, through 10, for 10 years. But if I pay them off early, it's going to save us more than that in interest, significantly more than that in interest over the period. And we'll free up that additional money for to go towards.
Can we have like, what, three more years on the voting machines?
Uh...
That ends, that was a, that's a long loan.
I think it's four. I think this is the second year, right? It was five years.
Yeah, that was about $180,000 or $200,000, $100,200.
Something like that, yeah.
Yeah.
Store money towards it when it's done?
Yeah.
Yep.
So.
Excellent. Anything else, Scott?
No.
Thank you.
Roll call?
Hambley?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Shovels in the ground.
Yeah.
Very exciting.
Yes. We have one other resolution from JFS.
Yeah, she's on the.
Okay, you want to wait? Okay, Debbie. We'll go, we'll start next for Shannon. You can come up and present your name and caller. Shannon, Transit Department?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Wow.
Got show and tell today.
Oh.
Just a quick report. Our monthly numbers continue. Our ridership continues to lag a little bit. It are returning in some of the cities, but overall, we're still down with ridership. And but we're continuing to provide the service. It's essential services, medical. A lot of work programs are starting back up again. People are getting back to work, so we're excited to see that. I wanted just some financial information. We're continuing to draw down our first CARES Act large fund. About a million dollars has been drawn down so far of our 2.5 million. So we're really using that for operating funds. It's essential for us to provide those services. Again, our funding greatly depends on that right now. There is some state news. There's been some legislation discussion, and I was discussing it with Steve a little bit. But there is something, an initiative, the Department of Transportation budget to be cut by 90%. 70 million over statewide for the state, down to about 7.3 million. So that won't affect us too awful much. I think it affects the large 3C transit systems and some of the larger ones. So we've been really good to leverage our funds and not let it affect us too much. We are looking at some Ohio transportation preservation grants for next year for buying some more buses, about $400,000. We're going to try to get some of that money. I just think it's going to be tough for the state. I think you're going to come at landing at a number in between that 70 and 7.3. So that's more information to come statewide.
But Shannon, we've had really a historically great relationship with Greater Cleveland, or Cuyahoga County Transit, in swapping funds back and forth. And that may affect.
That's still happening. We're moving forward with that. What happens with that is after the grants come out, the UZA funding, we get, like you said, money from Cleveland and money from Akron. Our Akron capital funds, we get to run our operation for capital funding and things like that, preventative maintenance. We write that grant. But then we also do a capital for operating exchange with Cleveland. That's taking place again. So we're working through that. That'll help us to, again, sustain all essential services and make sure that we're doing the right things. And we are. Financially, we're pretty sound. I'm very happy the way things are going. We continue to be physically responsible daily with cancellations happening and pulling buses in that are not needed on the road. And our technology is really driving that. So that leads me to my technology discussion here. We have modems put on the bus. I don't have a modem because they're actually all in the buses. But a modem, and I mentioned it in the last month, it's like a modem in your home. It picks up a Wi-Fi signal or a hard-wired signal. That modem is going to power two things. It's going to power our tablets, which is our workforce tablets that'll be on the buses that'll make us more efficient. Recording data is so huge right now, especially with National Transit Data Month and reporting. We have to do all that right now manually. So it's a lot of spreadsheets, a lot of calculations. We want to get a very clean way to collect that data. And this is the other unit it'll get plugged into. If you see there's a mount that'll mount to a pole in the bus, we did a site survey with the company, and we know where we're going to put this. But this is our Easy Fair validator. This is a validator. I brought one along. This is kind of precious to us. I hold it like that. It's got three areas to it. The top part is a visual validation. It'll show green if the ticket's good when it's swiped on your smartphone or a smart card. And I'll talk about that in a minute. And then it's got this area here, which actually does the main swiping. And then you'll see this area here. This technology is proven, okay? It's not new to the world, but it's new to transit. So this is a unit that will get plugged into that modem and communicate for Easy Fair validation. This is a big deal for us because it brings us into the years that we need to be into when it comes to technology and cashless safe systems. You know, if you don't have to have cash, and a lot of people don't carry cash anymore. It's allowing us to essentially communicate with people. We find out a lot of things about them, too, when they swipe. You know, they're riding with us often. It's going to show us what Bill and I have long talked about. Who's riding? How often do they ride? Were they bored? This is a lot of data collection. It's a good thing. A lot of our transit riders are excited. We're doing about 14% of our folks that pay with a fare cash. 14% are using this now. We hope to push this above 50%. And I think when it's on the bus, right there, people know, what's that? So we're excited about this unit here. This is a very rugged unit. It's got a speaker.
I was going to say, it looks dirty.
But this is not, we were able to apply for some grant funding through a joint with NeoRide that we're part of. There's 14 other transits that are using this in the state right now, along with Summit County. So now somebody can swipe their car, their phone, or their smart card here or in Summit County. And soon Cleveland, I think that'll happen for Cleveland, too. But I wanted to bring that along. It's real. They actually can touch it, and I like to show it off. So it takes a lot of work to get these things hooked up properly. And so we've got technology on the buses coming that's really going to help us leverage a lot of different things and bring us up. The smart cards, last thing I'll mention about the smart cards. The smart card is mainly going to be a credit card that's got a chip in it that you can, and that might be most popular. I don't know. But we're going to be purchasing a small amount and testing it and see how people like it. But imagine you load your card, you tap it. It's like a debit card. I think you're going to see some folks really get excited about it. We have to get a little creative on how we're going to communicate that. I will also tell you that I'm going to hand out a couple, and I have a few more. If you could pass those down for me.
Sure.
These are some communicational cards that we're using.
Oh, I'm sorry.
These are some communicational cards. We're trying to get, this actually came from a driver. The driver said, how do we tell people about our service, Shannon? So we tried to make a big card. It ended up being a small credit card. Now, it's a little tiny, and that's okay. But on the back, it's got a QR code system on it, too. A lot of folks know what that is, but we'll be explaining that out. But this takes us right to our Facebook and our website. So we're going, we're trying some dabbling in this, how to market, how to hand things out. The drivers really want something in their hand that they can hand out to new riders. That's where this came from.
Excellent.
So we're trying. You know, I think it's a little small for me with some of the seniors, not small for most of us. But I think, but it does give a phone number, and it says with our new logo on it, and this is what we're all about. And that goes along with our rebranding system with our buses and our bus stops coming signs, too. So a lot of good things going on.
Very good. So are you planning additional bus stops around the county?
Our goal is to put a bus stop, physical bus stop sign, whether it's on a post or on a building, at every stop we have in fixed route. So that means we need to be very diligent where we put these things. So we're looking at some Brunswick restructuring. We're also looking at some things that connect the counties. A bus coming from Brunswick down to Medina, and then the bus that would leave Medina, go out in the low dye, over to Wadsworth, and back to Medina. So we're talking with economic development. The Transit Consortium Group seemed really excited about it. I think it's conceptually right now a possibility that we could do this on our next bid on a pilot program, maybe the north section of it, and provide some really good service. But to answer your question, a physical bus stop sign needs to be everywhere that we pick up, and with a number on it. So if Colleen would call and say, I'm standing in Brunswick beside bus stop number 12, they can call in, hey, I know where you're at. So I think that will bring transit much more home to people, that it's real, and they can ride it, and transit for all, you know, will be well on its way, so.
How about bus stops at industrial parks and at the shelters?
When you say that. So I could talk a little bit, as we restructure the Brunswick routes, we're talking about running one of the loops, pushing it up into that north side of the industrial park. I went up and surveyed it. I counted 14 different jobs posting signs in that little, I mean, that small area. But it's big. I mean, there's a lot going on right there. So I'll be meeting with some of those businesses and maybe a shelter there and a general area. There's a corner right there that would probably service four or five businesses, and we could, but I think that's a very real possibility to restructure the Brunswick route, to push some service up into those industrial parks. Along with the South Circular, we'd go down Lake Road and around, you know, the areas that really need service for work. And Kathy and I are really excited about trying this. But we talked a little bit about how do we get this off the ground? How do we get the businesses excited about it, right? Because you don't want to run the service and it would be right. So yeah, it's an awareness program that we need to really push. I'll be talking to a lot of businesses. I've been on so many Zoom calls, I can't count.
You should try to get on one of the, as one of the speakers for the Economic Development Monthly Meetings. And because you can get in front of 75 or 100, I'm not sure how many people go, but a lot. And they're all business owners, and a lot of them are in the industrial parks.
I'll be on that.
Yep.
I've also been part of some mayor meetings with Medina here about a homeless coalition group that is meeting right now that, you don't think about it much, but it can connect a lot of people to jobs, which I'm all about, and opportunities to, you know, improve their situation. And then there's something coming up in April with the mayor of Medina as well. Dennis invited me to come to a, I think it's, I'm not sure the name of it. If you guys know the name of it, it's the friends and family type of meeting. It's in the evening. So I think he's going to invite a lot of people to talk about what transit is. I just, I was excited that he gave me the opportunity to do that. So we'll see how that goes.
Well, interesting. I talked to him about taking a bus ride as well.
Yeah, I thought you were going to organize that?
We need to, well, we need to get a little further down the road with the COVID. But I would like, if we could get the three of us and, you know, the mayors from the three major cities and.
I think now you're talking. I'm really excited to hear you say that, so.
That'll be fun.
Yeah. I think our transit can do a lot of things for the community, a lot more than it does now. We're, in some ways, I think we're touching a lot of people, but we could be touching a lot more.
Yeah. Excellent.
Okay.
Thank you, Shannon.
Thank you.
And next up, we have Debbie Kylie, who has a resolution for us as well. Good morning, Debbie.
Good morning. Just one resolution for your consideration. It's just authorizing an updated procurement plan. We are editing Section 4.2. It's micro purchases to increase the amount from 3,500 to 10,000 effective March 1st, 2021.
Move to approve the resolution.
Second.
Any questions, discussion? Roll call?
Hambley?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Updates? Move on. Okay. As I did last month, I'll just do division updates. So the Public Assistance Division, you may have heard that January 28th, President Biden signed an executive order that he reopened the marketplace. So typically, the marketplace to purchase insurance is only open through November through December. He has now opened it, reopened it because of COVID, February 15th through May 15th. Doesn't sound like that big of a deal for our agency, but anyone that contacts the marketplace and claims an income, even verbally, that's below the Medicaid threshold, we automatically receive a referral, and we have to process those applications. So we're used to that influx, November through December, but now they've just added an additional three months to it. We haven't seen an uptick yet because it's still early. What is it, the 23rd? So people are probably just calling. And those referrals have some sort of lag time from call to when they arrive in our office. But, so we're waiting, waiting for that to happen.
Debbie, do you have any idea how many you'll get in that November to December timeframe typically?
In any given month, we've gotten over 1,000.
Oh, really?
Yeah. And it's unfortunate because all they have to do is make a statement of what their income is. And these individuals that are applying, they don't understand the impact of making a statement of their income. So we're sometimes getting referrals about somebody's net income where we determine eligibility on their gross income before taxes, maybe minus health deductions and things like that. So when we're getting the referral, and then we actually review the application with the individual, we're saying, sorry, your income is too high because we're looking at a different number than what you quoted at the marketplace. So you still have to look at each one, though. You still have to touch each one. So it's work.
Yeah.
Child Protective. Sadly, the division took in 11 children, and that was just in three days. All of them were of sex abuse nature. So that has been a sad update nonetheless. Along with the Child Protective, as I had mentioned last month, the kinship support program, that's still going forward and in place. What the agency has done, my agency has done, is we've sent letters to those next of kin that have children in care and asked them, what's your interest in becoming licensed? Because that will help us at least have a pulse of what's the local impact if you do want to be licensed. Now, the county and Job and Family Services is going to be responsible for that per diem, for that cost of care. So those letters went out last week. We haven't, if we've gotten any back, I haven't heard what the response was. So we'll keep an eye on that this week and through the next coming weeks.
Approximate number on the households?
It was 14 when I was here last month. Since we took those 11 children, now we have 19 in kinship care. Leadership Medina County, I can't give them enough plugs. They remain a wonderful partner. We're actually working on a video with them. Amy and I are going to meet this afternoon with an individual that Leadership Medina County has hooked us up with. It's going to be a promotional video for continuing foster parent awareness. It's going to be almost documentary-like, so it's, it just brings a huge smile to my face. I can't wait. I can't wait for that to happen. So more updates on that will be coming. Child Support, it's been fairly quiet. They plug right along. They're doing what they need to do. There's actually some software updates that are happening with, the current public assistance system talks to the child support system, so we can recognize children of a common system, someone that's on Medicaid or receiving cash benefits. We can recognize them from a child support perspective. Child Protective has now added that to their system. So it's going to be like a nice triangular effort that we can better identify common children among systems, not only Medicaid cash assistance, but child support and now child welfare. So there's some tweaks, obviously, that need to be done, but that progress is continuing. That is my updates.
Very good.
Very good. Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Have a great day.
See you soon.
Ed, your turn. Ed Zachary, Veteran Services Office.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Do you guys all got a copy of the report I sent already?
We did.
All right. What a year, huh?
Yeah.
So we'll begin on page four. Just a couple new programs we started the past year. We made a partnership with the Health Department to provide dental to eligible veterans in Medina County. If they meet the financial assistance standards, then we can help them with dental down there. And they are, we've been doing that for years. We just kind of formalized the program, so the payments are a little bit easier between us and them, and it's a little bit easier for the veterans. They got to apply through us, and they also have to apply down there because they get some grant money, which helps pay and offset the cost. It seems to be working well. Not sure how big it will go because this past year's been kind of just a weird year for everything. Another thing we started this past year is providing wheelchair service to and from the clinics that we serve in Parma, the hospital in Cleveland, and then the Akron C-Boc. We were able to work out a deal with the transit. Obviously, we got one of their old wheelchair vans, got it cleaned up, got it all set to go. We've started to utilize that. And basically, what we want to see is whether the need is really there before we go out and purchase a van that accommodates both wheelchairs. And we think that that eventually will pick up, though, too. We've seen it used a few times in the past few months. So is that.
Ed, is that something that transit could help you with?
So we, you know, I talked to transit about it, and they're open to that discussion. Problem is, is they really can't afford a vehicle to go all the way downtown and sit down there and come back. So I'm not so sure that would be as cost-effective. I am interested in a conversation with him when I go to purchase new vehicle, though, because as the riders get older, the vans that we have are just not as accommodating as possibly getting into having something that's conformed to a bus where you walk up some stairs as opposed to climbing in the back seats and stuff. So the next vehicle, I think we're going to talk to Shannon and see where we can go with that because he's the expert on buses, obviously. The other thing is, is speaking of transit, we continued, last year was our second year for the free transit for veterans within Medina County. It seems to be working well between the recorder's office and getting IDs and being able to ride the transit. I think, you know, it's been pretty steady even through COVID. The veterans have been riding the transit system. So it provides them an opportunity to get out and go to places other than just medical appointments. One of the other services we added this year is we had two people in the office trained to do appeals with the Board of Veterans Appeals in Washington, DC. They're all virtual appeals. We had the office set up last year to be able to do all the virtual video conferencing secure with Washington. And we started to conduct those appeals. Actually, that's the only thing our office lets people in for at this point, is the appeal. So we're doing the appeals with the board. It's a great service for our veterans. Typically, they had to drive downtown to the federal building wherever they lived in the state of Ohio. So the counties that are doing that, and I think there's about nine right now throughout the state that are doing it, they don't have to drive to Cleveland anymore and go through the security and federal building. They could just come in. We're the representative anyway on the claim, and we help them with the appeal and do that. So that's the other service we added. As far as the assistance program goes for financial assistance, we helped 358 Medina County veterans and their families. It's 141 individual families. I want to state that from 2019, that number was 479 and 160. In 2016, it was 568 and 268. So what we've seen is the financial assistance has really lowered, and we're starting to help the same families. And typically, that's, you know, due to low income, a disability, or just sometimes it's just age, you know? I mean, and their income is very low because of social security or something like that. So the assistance is down, and I want to say that the first few months of COVID, it really spiked, and then it dropped. And I think that's because of all the other assistance that came in. People are getting the full SNAP benefits every month and things like that. So our assistance has kind of tapered off. We wrote $241,281 in vouchers last year, and we paid out $234,789.15 in those vouchers. And you can see on page six, there's a graph of the month by month of what we wrote and what we paid out and how many families we helped. The average dollar amount is $673.97. That's up from four years ago where we were at $404.04. So as we help less people, we are helping them with more. Bills have gone up, expenses, just economics, I assume. The expenditure per veteran has gone up for financial assistance, and it still is the most costly thing we do in the office is financial assistance, obviously. When we talk about comparing the financial assistance dollars... When we talk about comparing the financial assistance dollars per veteran, we're spending much less per veteran for those that we don't spend financial assistance on. So I spend more time with a veteran than I'm doing federal work for, but not as much money on it, doesn't cost as much, so. There's fifteen active veterans organizations in the county still. That's down from a few, a couple of years ago. A couple of them have closed, the one in Spencer closed, the one in Chatham's closed. So they are kind of, they're hurting for members. I mean, obviously, veterans, even though the population of veterans is supposed to go up, you know, the World War II guys have all kind of passed on, and there's a lot of Vietnam veterans out there. The population has dropped. They're saying by two thousand twenty six, it's supposed to start to increase again with all these new folks from OIF and OEF that are out there. We work well with all those organizations. We attend their meetings on a typically an annual basis. Of course, my commissioners come from those meetings, so from those organizations, so they attend them more than I do. I usually make at least one meeting a year. This past year, we haven't did that, though. Meetings have been canceled, and I think a lot of the organizations really took a hit. The state provided some grant money to the veterans organizations of the state of Ohio. They could get up to five thousand dollars to put it towards COVID funding, and that went for everything from HVAC to cleaning supplies to masks to whatever they were spending on. Some of the organizations in Medina County, we had a briefing, I think it was back in August or September, where we briefed all the organizations on that grant money, and some of them did apply, some of them chose not to, so. We transported five hundred and fifty one veterans to the clinics in Parma, Cleveland, and Akron last year. That's about half of what we typically transport. Obviously, you know, in May, April, May, June, VA went as virtual as they could with just about everything. They started to open back up in, you know, midsummer and everything like that. But they're still trying to do as much telehealth and virtual appointments as they can. So the ridership is down. It has started to increase because the VA is calling veterans to come get their COVID shots. So they're using an algorithm based on whatever state that the clinic is in. So they're going off of the same prerequisites that the state of Ohio is using, but they have an algorithm as to who they contact to come in for COVID shots. So they have a lot of vaccines. So if you meet one of the high-risk categories and you're within that age category, they're actually calling you if you're enrolled in VA healthcare and saying, do you want a shot? We're going to schedule you to come on and do it. They're doing Saturday clinics and everything else, so.
So do the vets have to go downtown to get them?
Right now, the, so they're kind of moving around. Typically, they're at Parma. They had a clinic in Akron a couple of weeks ago. So the vaccines are kind of moving from location to location. But if you're enrolled in Cleveland, then typically, they'll schedule you for whatever clinic is the C-Boc that you use. So northeastern Ohio is, goes all the way down to Mansfield, Canton, all the way over, I think, to like Trumbull County, the clinics over there. So most of the ones in Medina are all Akron, Parma, or Cleveland. So we've seen an uptick in the transportation, just taking folks to get their shots, which is good. I mean, that's a good thing, so. The Vet Center that we co-op with, the Parma Vet Center that we provide service out here in Medina, he saw two hundred and forty four patients last year. Everything has gone virtual for him. He did open up for like a month, and then the VA shut them back down to go virtual again, which is really a big hit, not just for the vet centers, but, you know, the mental health counseling, because it's not hands-on, you know, medical counseling, medical treatment, has all gone virtual. And I, you know, and when I talk to veterans, it's, it's not a one-on-one. I mean, even though they're still meeting with their clinician over the internet, you know, they're not getting that warm hug or, you know? I mean, people want to see people. So I think the mental health across the board, if you ever talk to anybody in or outside the veterans community, I think has really taken a hit because it is so virtual. But it is what it is. We, I worked with Scott. We know that the office is over in the Professional Building. In the Professional Building, we're going to move out of there. So Scott has given us an office where we can move into an office for older adults. It's kind of mothball right now because we're not doing anything live. So once he does go back to the in-person appointments, we're going to move him from the Professional Building to the Office for Older Adults, which I think works well. It's a vacant office, and then there's a conference room right next door, so he can schedule that to do the group sessions in the conference room, too. So it should be a good alternative for him. There's still two group homes in Medina County which service veterans. One is in Hinckley, another one is New Bridge Place down in Lodi. And we work closely with the one in New Bridge Place. Matter of fact, we just had a conversation the other day with Elizabeth down there. She does a great service. And they also contract with several nursing homes throughout the county that they put veterans in that are authorized contracted care. We filed two hundred and ninety four claims last year with the Department of Veterans Affairs. And actually, we're right where we were almost. I mean, it's less than we did the year before, but when I look at a month to month, we kind of dipped down for a few months, but everything that we could do live, we're doing virtual. So all, right now, when we close back up in November, all our appointments are telephonic or virtually online with, you know, one of the conference chatroom things. And, I mean, we're actually filing just as many claims as we did live. It's taken a little bit longer because, you know, between dropping off documents and emailing and mailing and things like that, but we're able to accomplish all the services we could before. We filed two hundred and ninety four rating and a total of four hundred and fifty eight VA claims in two thousand twenty, fifty five appeals or higher level reviews, and we serviced one thousand two hundred and ninety veterans and their families with paperwork to the VA. We had a total of eighteen hundred and forty one appointments. I'll tell you, the year before, we had over three thousand. So when I talk about appointments, I'm not really, we're not tracking the appointments as well as we could when someone came into the office. I will tell you, our phone calls are over six hundred a month. It's just crazy time on the phone. And that, you know, is just calling people back, people calling us. We're typically, in any given month before, we would have about a hundred to a hundred and fifty phone calls. We're well over six hundred at this point. So those are some of the appointments also.
Is there a, I'll refer to it as a territorial limitation? So I mean, could somebody from Cleveland make a phone call to Medina to have assistance?
So we cannot provide financial assistance to them.
Okay.
But all our accusations with the Department of Veterans Affairs, for me to do federal work, I have to agree to do anybody. Now, we do push people back to that county depending on what it is, but there has been, we get some people like from Strongsville and stuff like that that come out here and drop paperwork off when we file for them.
Okay.
But, yeah, there's no territorial when it comes to federal or state benefits, and that's just the way it is, so.
Okay, thank you.
So the phone call, yeah, we do, a lot of phone, a lot of people just call us. There used to be a phone system to where it went to your, they had it between Kyle Hoggas Summit and Medina, where depending on what area code you called from, it would go to that office. And they got rid of that when cell phones started to become so popular. And it was about two years after I got here because it was just, you know, whose cellphone, never know where you live, so. Last year, now, these lower figures down here come from two thousand nineteen. I won't have two thousand twenty's report until about May. We got thirty two million dollars in compensation, or, I'm sorry, thirty nine million dollars in compensation for two thousand nineteen from the VA, four point seven million in education, for a total of seventy five million dollars in Medina County is what came in. And, you know, almost forty million of that was cash, right into veterans' pockets, which helps pay for assisted living, nursing homes, in-home healthcare, and whatever else the veterans spend it on. So it's a huge amount of money. Just our expenses, our expenses are down this year. Obviously, the financial assistance is down, training's down, travel's down, everything's been down. So we still try to, you know, keep everything well within the books. The past year's been anything but normal. I mean, it would've been open, would've been closed. We did have to close and stop. We tried to stay healthy because we're a small office. One of us gets it, you know, when a couple of us got it in November, I had to quarantine all my drivers and stop providing transportation, which is about the only thing people complained about, was that they couldn't get to their medical appointments for two weeks. I had to ground my drivers. It is what it is at that point, but, so we're trying to just stay healthy, and that's why we closed the doors again. I do want to say that our budget for next year, although we increased the financial assistance because we just don't know what the economic outlook is going to be, I don't think anybody can predict it at this point. We did lower a lot of our other expenses and brought that down, so we kind of compensated there. So hopefully, that'll turn out okay. We didn't conduct any outreach events or anything like that. I listed a bunch that we didn't conduct on here, so just so you know what we usually do. And that's about it for pending any questions.
I'm good, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Let's hope for a better year, right?
Yes, indeed, indeed. And next, we have Linda Hoffman, our new Medina County Recorder.
Welcome, we're so glad to have you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, thank you, and I'll be brief. I just wanted officially to be able to attend now that I'm in the office downstairs as the Medina County Recorder. The first three weeks on the job have been a little bit of a transition, obviously with Chief Deputy having some personal issues to take care of, and the construction zone that I anticipate is going to be there for the next couple of months as they transition part of tax maps into our space.
Have they started?
Yes, yes, day one of my coming in. So I've not moved in any wall art or any desk mementos or anything of a personal nature because I'm told, don't get too comfortable, you're not going to be sitting at this desk very long. So it's been wonderful. I've appreciated the support of the staff and the other county elected officials. And hopefully, a month or two from now, we'll be a little bit further along in the remodel and relocation. The gals at the front desk are still doing their job, seeing those people by appointments for recording and e-filing's happening without any hiccups with COVID, so all is good.
That's one good thing about the e-filing is it less bodies standing in line, so.
Right, right.
It's been good.
And, you know, I did have, on day one, I had a very upset resident call, not happy with the property fraud alert system. And he suggested that anytime a residential property owner was filing a deed or a deed came in on residential property, that the owner had to be personally present here at the Recorder's Office with a photo ID to avoid fraud. And I'll just let you process that thought.
But, but you know, to be fair to the banks on the home equity loans, the banks are very, very strict if you go in and get a home equity loan now, you know, with husband and wife signers, that you both have your ID.
Right.
So it's not like it was twenty years ago. The banks have been very, very good about asking for ID for those types of loans.
Right, and I, I'm not sure that the general public realizes the safeguards after the last home mortgage loan crisis that have changed in the banking industry, that have affected the bankers, the title companies, everybody in that chain before that document gets to the Recorder's Office. And the other concern is our fraud alert system happens after the fact. Once that document's recorded, then the resident gets the notice either by phone or email, however they've selected, that this has happened, and now the burden is on them if it's not a legit transfer to contact the county prosecutors or the appropriate jurisdiction to investigate and move forward. But certainly, by far and away, this process reduces the number of people having to come in, the inconvenience of husband and wife having to appear, all that traffic in and out of the office, especially with the pandemic going on, so.
And more often than not, it's a title company person, it's not even one of the transfers.
This person wanted the actual titled owner to be present at the counter with their IDs. That was their suggested solution. So my doors open, the phone lines are open for any suggestions?
I look forward to seeing your completed remodel to see how it goes.
It will be, it will be nice to have that all done, and hopefully, by summer, then, you know, countywide, statewide, we're more open for business as usual than we are right now, so I'm optimistic.
I understand you're refreshing your website as well.
Yes, the website was refreshed yesterday morning, so now, hopefully, in all locations, it should be my name and photograph. And we're rolling that out on all the printed documents as well and trying to be green in using existing envelope stock with just some labels over the return address so that, you know, we're saving some dollars.
I saw your official sign was down by the door yesterday.
It's, the new one's up.
Yes.
As of this morning, so we're all good.
Super.
Happy to be here.
We're so happy to have you.
Glad you're here.
Welcome, anything you need, you call, anything.
Have a great day.
Thank you for coming in.
You're welcome.
We appreciate it.
Bye-bye.
So next, could I have a motion to go into executive session following discussion?
Yeah, so move to executive session for the purpose of consider employment and compensation of a public employee.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Hamley?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Yes. All right, so now we'll go into discussion, and it seems that our audience has vacated the premises, so. Amy, do you have anything?
I do not.
Does Scott have anything?
He didn't.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
All right.
Steve?
Yeah, I, first off, I want Shannon to mention that last Thursday, the eighteenth, we had a homeless coalition. Amy wasn't able to join us, but Shannon was there as well as Greg Brown, as well as myself. That Mayor Hanwell had invited us, this is, they'd had previous meetings, invited the county to be much more engaged in terms of this homeless coalition issue with Medina. And I think it was very good, largely was populated by, or attended by the churches, Love Inc. and others that have been engaged in providing support for those that are homeless. There were some connections there, too, and I think Skip Sipos was there as well, Medina Housing Authority. And we were able to kind of talk to the group about what's going on with, in the housing network. And they will be approached, and Skip advised them, as well as other members, we advise them that will be coming to the commissioners here within the next month or so regarding a project that involves much more of a strategic planning initiative when it comes to taking a look at the homeless and the housing situation. There was a lot of discussion about our Housing Management Information System, HMIS. It's been in place for a number of years and that data, and that, how that actually undercounts, undercounts the number of homeless within the county, just because, by design, but that's for the state and federal. But I think there are some strategic efforts to take a look at homelessness and what's going on in housing throughout the county. There are going to be some follow-up meetings to this, but I think it was a good, one of the problems, or one of the issues in the years have been is trying to keep that communication between, I'll just say, the government silos that we have, the government agencies, the nonprofits, and then, of course, you've got the, well, you've got the churches out there that are working somewhat autonomous and independently of one another in providing services to their, I'll just say, to their parishes, to their congregation, to those in need. And so there's that overall need to try to help coordinate that, so you don't have an individual jumping from one church to the other church, to the other church, to the other church. In the end, not really being able to serve their, serve their need of helping them, we'll just say, get in a better place. Well, we found a number of years ago that case management is very important for that because the idea is, is whatever, if you do develop a homeless shelter, is that's meant to be temporary. That's not meant to be a long-term. Habitat for Humanity was there as well. And, but the idea is to get them transitioned to where they can find much more stable, not only housing, but employment and all those other things. And I think sometimes that involves not only, you know, skills, skill-building, education, could be even family counseling or mental health counseling, or even, we'll just say, a drug addiction sometimes has a play. So the, it comes down to us how we're going to be worked cooperatively. And I do want to praise the mayor and working with his, his local constituency to try to help continue to address this. So there can be some follow-up meetings. They're going to be much more engaged with the housing network, and you'll be hearing from Skip and the Housing Network here within the next month or so as to the planning phases that actually the Adam Board and the Metropolitan Housing, they're going to be funding this initiative for this effort to kind of take a look and kind of develop the next steps of where we need to be in terms of being able to provide public and nonprofit or charitable assistance to people that are facing those kind of crises. So I, like I said, we did the emails, I said, yeah, I'd volunteer to attend it, so that's my report, that we'll be coming back further from that. And the other one I wanted to bring up was House Bill one twenty-three.
Can I ask a question for you? Did they have any sort of account of how many homeless they estimated were in Medina County?
Well, the problem is, is using the data, HMIS, I mean, they gave us numbers as to, yeah, monthly, you know, like sixty, sixty individual families over a given month, but when we do the HMIS, maybe five show up. In other words, that count that they do. Because those that are living at, let's say, with a family member or with a friend, don't get counted, but they are in a position where they need the assistance. So that's, that's the real, that's the real problem with coming with a finite number and says, hey, this is what we have. But it's one that I think strategically, we are going to be having to address, especially if you, if you're talking about building a homeless shelter or a facility where you can bring people in to provide that temporary housing. COVID has actually, and I think it was brought up in that discussion about Operation Homes as an example, has somewhat been devastated in that model being owed from church, church facility to facility, and they're basically housing everybody hotels and motels because of that, we have to separate people.
And the expense has been enormous.
And the expenses, it's a cash expense. So I think those are the issues that we're going to have to deal with long-term. And then, of course, you have different types And then, of course, you have different types of population. You can find a place maybe for an individual, an elderly, or we'll just say, a man or a woman. But if you have a family, well, then that's a whole different issue because now you're talking about trying to provide that if it's a single parent, whether it's a male or female, and the children, then what do you do? You have the schooling issue, you have the transportation. So all that is, everyone is going to have, like I said, have a part in it and trying to have everybody work together. But that number's hard to define. When they do the HMIS count, like I said, you get five. We have much more than that because just when you hear from the, just one church, Love Inc., I think was, you know, talking about like 50 people or 60 people over a given month come in and trying to look for it. But were they ones that had been previously served by another church? And then they were there for a week and then now they're transitioning to another one? So is it the same person or is it a new, new need? So I think those, that's why the HMIS database and getting them engaged with the Metropolitan Housing and the housing network will give us a better handle on those numbers.
That's referring to case management.
Case management, exactly. So you're basically, you're following is like, okay, we know this and it's great, this church is helping, and this church is helping, and this group's helping. But it could be the same family or it could be three separate families. And until you really do that and to see what, what they need in terms of resources, is it job training, is it just, you know, very, very temporary, but can we help move them so that they actually can, can thrive, they can actually come and become much more stable in terms of housing, but also the other needs, employment and whatever stability they need. It might, like I said, some of it is maybe financially counseling, some may be much more, I'll just say, mental health counseling for issues within the family themselves.
It's nice that they're working together towards permanent solutions.
Agreed, agreed. But they'll be coming, like I said, the housing network will be coming to us within the next month or two with what they're doing and add that as to the part of the agenda and letting us know at the county level, I'll be trying to address that.
Excellent. Very good.
And the other one was the, if I could, House Bill 123, that was modifying the community reinvestment areas. And I, we had a meeting of the taxation and finance committee for CCAO on Friday. And they wanted to move forward actually to support, there was a number of the commissioners on there wanted to actively push this bill, actually have CCAO support this. A couple of us were able to push back and say, well, let's hold off and hear from our economic development individuals. I was aware of this bill last GA, last General Assembly, Rep. Frazier was the one who was pushing this and some other members to update the CRA legislation. It kind of died, but it's kind of been revived. It's been modified slightly. Senate version is working its way through. They've eliminated some of the more egregious issues that were, but Bethany has been monitoring it. I was aware of it as well. And I asked her, and I know Colin, you did as well, asked her to provide us with like a bullet point. We're meeting actually Friday at 3:00 again to discuss this and give, because right now they want to prepare a testimony. This week is sponsor testimony, it's in Ways and Means Committee in the House. But as you can tell by her notes, it still has some genuine issues, at least I think from Medina County's perspective, and I think personally, some of us have some issues with some of these things.
I think all the points that Bethany made and economic developments take on this as a whole are spot on.
Oh, I agree. The impact on the local schools obviously hits, taking that threshold from 50, 50% to 75%.
That's the worst one.
That won't require the problem, require that. And I think when you add this to the other provision that requires no approval by the state for what conditions you're setting, there's no clawback, there's no, what will happen is be the lowest common denominator. We in a county would never, but they're arguing is that counties will now have much more flexibility as how we design these CRAs. The problem will be is that, yeah, we're a county and go like, yeah, we're going to be responsible, we're not going to go to that step, we're going to have our schools get involved, we're going to do this. But what about the next county, the next one that's competing with us? And they'll go, hey, well, we'll, we actually won't do that. We won't, and we won't even require you to report that you've, the number of investment in jobs.
That you might not hit the number of jobs, right?
Yeah, yeah.
The stance on all these changes are flexibility? That's the whole stance on all of these changes?
It's, well, yes, you could argue that that's, they're trying to encourage more flexibility, allowing local governments to make that determination. There's been longstanding argument that the state shouldn't be setting up these kind of guidelines that ought to be more local control. The problem, and I think they've missed, there's a lot of research done in the 90s and early 2000s on the state role. And the state now, more recently, is moving in the other direction. They want to have less involvement and they want to give more flexibility. The problem is, is the less, the more flexibility means the fewer standards and the more competition you have between counties or communities on these benefits. And what it comes down to is, how are we going to compete with another county that has no rules? That basically is just willing to give away their total tax base to promote jobs. And here we are, we're having all these requirements to demonstrate that, yes, you have your job creation, yes, you have the certain percentage that you have to provide for the schools or pilot or some kind of payment in lieu of taxes.
And there is accountability.
Exactly. And we are accountable, but then you have next door, another county go, nah, don't worry about it, we'll just give you the taxes and the tax abatement, you just come on in and...
That would be extremely...
It is a race to the bottom, and that's the problem with it.
And that would be extremely difficult for the school systems.
Oh, indeed.
Extremely.
Yes, I absolutely agree, and I think I'm in agreement. And so if it's all right, I'll be sharing on Zoom that our county, with your agreement, will be, that we're going to be opposed to this. Well, we can formalize something as the time comes, right? Next week, next week would probably, in Ways and Means, will be the community testimony and proponent testimony. I'll prepare something if you wish that we can maybe sign off to also, and I'm sure Bethany will be likewise providing something.
So are you going to prepare a letter for us to sign?
I'll prepare a letter for maybe next week or so. But we'll have to wait until the testimony starts coming out. But right now, this is early. Like I said, sponsor testimony was this week. But this is one that there, a number of the larger counties, for various reasons, a number of them are just out there saying, yes, let's, let's keep Columbus out of this, we've got to have more control locally.
I would think that some of the larger counties would be on the opposite side of that.
Yes.
I was surprised, frankly. I was surprised by the discussion. Yeah, I would, I would have thought so too. Because they're the ones that are basically, the outline costs would be more predatory, I would say.
Are the school superintendents uniting against this?
I don't know, they're not, this is a CCAO. So this is all commissioners. So, but there's some counties that are in a different position, they're, they want any job creation, even to the belief that, you know, businesses ought to be able to come in and operate and really ought to be up to the county to develop these CRA programs that in effect give away that tax base because they want that, that wealth, they want those jobs and so, that wealth creation. But the problem is, is at whose expense?
Right.
Mostly it ended up being the schools. And I think we take a little bit different view.
Yes.
I think more, much more comprehensive holistically. So I'll prepare a letter with your approval.
Thank you.
And then Bethany, I'm sure that she's going to be getting the Ohio Development Association on this one. This is one that we, like I said, we tracked from last year. And then obviously, it's coming back through. But as part of the CCAO, hopefully, we can convince that we ought to, at most, be interested party, but there are a number of concerns. And I'll make sure that the policy people over at CCAO get copies of these concerns.
Thank you.
Okay, sure. All right. That's all I've got.
We're far, it's far from over, but it has been nice the past several weeks as we've gotten our update from Krista from the Health Department, that numbers, cases in Medina County appear to be trending in a better number than last year. So again, we're not done, but it is nice to see that our numbers are trending better.
Good, yeah, yeah. Yeah, I missed the call yesterday, sorry.
To that point.
Yes.
One thing we talked about.
Yesterday, yeah.
With Krista on the phone.
Yes.
Police.
Okay. They're still not part of that group.
They're first responders, and they're not even in a category yet.
Yeah.
And, you know, it's not the local health department issue, it's coming from the state.
Right, oh, yeah.
So I guess, Steve, similar to what you, I would like to put something together that we send down to Governor DeWine.
I am 100%.
That says, you know, we would like to see deputies, police, first responders elevated...
I guess I don't understand how police are not categorized as...
I don't either.
I mean, sometimes they're absolutely the first one on an accident where someone's injured and it's...
Over the last year, there's a lot of decisions by the executive branch, which are somewhat of a mystery.
They are absolutely...
Well, on my way into Medina yesterday morning, there was an accident on Route 3 at 162.
Yeah.
And the first car to show up, I mean, I was, I was like the fifth car behind.
Right.
The first car to show up was a police officer. And he got off and went to both cars and checked on the people. And so, I mean, they are exposed and they are there first.
I think Krista has more than once and I even publicly voiced her frustration with not understanding. And I know that the governor meets, has that phone call with all the Health Department directors first thing in the morning, you know, Monday morning and so forth. And a lot of it is just all top-down, there's very little communication on the way up. And that has unfortunately been the tendency. And so they have voiced those concerns on so many things, not only in the distribution, but now the scheduling system that still isn't, you know, is out of whack and still isn't going to, not even sure how it's going to work. But all these things, it just seems that they're, that they basically are leaving the health professionals, the people who are actually delivering and closest to the problem, leaving them out of loop and making those decisions.
Well, and it's not even car accidents. Many times in our community, if there's a 911 call at a home.
Right.
Where an ambulance is required.
Yeah.
The cop is the first one there at the home, many, many times.
Yep.
Yep, absolutely.
Yeah.
Do you have anything else, Colin?
I do not, thank you.
We got a new report from CCAO on sales tax. So our sales tax for, this is the collections in January are up 2% over 2020.
Yeah, it's great.
And non-auto, and in the auto sector, they're up, there were two figures, 4 and 18%. So they're up rather significantly as well. So our revenues continue to be good from a sales tax standpoint. And the other thing, Scott, I saw a couple of emails floating around about the courthouse.
Yes.
Do we, do we have consensus on the design?
We do.
It's so exciting.
Exactly. So we've got...
Yes, you need to, we want to get you on record.
Yeah, write this down, Rod.
So, yeah, so we do have consensus on the design. We got notified by Judge Kovak, Veronica Perry, and Judge Dunn that their, the plans that were presented are acceptable. So we are now going to be moving into the, well, we've been talking about the technology design. So we've been talking about that, and we're going to be starting on construction documents here, where they've actually started on some of those. But, yeah, we are moving forward. So we plan to set up the staging areas in April sometime. We'll get the fence around, start the staging area, and then bids for construction will go out in May. And we should start construction sometime in June, July.
Excellent.
So, yeah, it's exciting.
Very exciting.
I just wish it was a little sooner, but that's okay.
As do we all.
Yes, as we all do.
Yeah, I know, I know.
Very good, very good. That's all I have, so we need to go into executive session now. So we're going to go next door. now. So we're going to go next door. Okay, it is 10:45. We're out of executive session. Back into regular session.
Move adjourn.
Second.
Call please.
Family?
Yes.
Sweater?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Yes. Thank you, have a great week.
Thank you.